We call the town council meeting to order for Tuesday, January 22, 2019 at 7:05 PM. Let's start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Mayor Dooty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candelora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Big Leone.
Here.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Here.
Motion to approve the previous minute's meeting for January 8, 2019, Water Pollution Control and Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing on roll call.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Upstaying.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into regular town council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move item 8A, Future Budget Planning Initiative, presentation from Rebecca Silman from Millman regarding the fire pension up in the agenda and do it before committee reports.
So moved. Second. Okay, roll call.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni, I'm sorry, Big Leone.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Becky Silman is here, I'd like to introduce her, and you have a packet of information in your, or in your Dropbox for the item 8A, which is the Future Budget Planning Initiative, really a presentation from Rebecca on the fire pension, and there's a wealth of information in here, but even more in Becky's experience and history with working with municipalities that I'm sure we'll hear of additional plans of other towns and other communities and other volunteer departments and other pensions, but I think we set this up to bring her expertise here tonight so that we could go through and, one, understand the plan and how it works, but also to look at options that we may have within the plan, if there was changes that you want, would like to make. So Becky, I appreciate your coming in, thank you for coming.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. Anthony is handing out a couple of things I've prepared for you, but before we get into those, I just wanted to spend 30 seconds talking about how the volunteer firefighters' plan works, the benefits that it provides, and then we can talk about a couple of things that I handed out. So this is a defined benefit plan, that means it provides a specific amount of benefit to a volunteer who works a certain amount, puts in a sufficient amount of service. It's a benefit that starts being paid when the volunteer retires and is payable for the rest of their life. Each volunteer needs to put in a sufficient amount of hours each year in order to be given a credit, a year of credit. There are 50 points, points, the volunteers know better than I do what you need to do to get a point, but a combination of hours spent training and responding to calls and so forth. So someone works enough to get 50 points, they've earned another year of benefit service for pension benefits. And the benefit currently, it has changed over time, the benefit level has been gradually increasing over time. Starting July 2018, the benefit level was $28.20 per year of service payable per month. So someone has 10 years of service, 10 credits, 10 years where they had 50 points, they'd get $282 per month and so forth. So the amount of monthly benefit depends on the number of years of credits that the volunteer has received. The benefit, that benefit is payable starting when that volunteer is age 65, so long as that person had 10 years of service or two years participating in the plan. So you can obviously have someone who starts volunteering at a young age and puts in a lot of time and compiles a lot of years of credits. There can also be volunteers who don't necessarily year in, year out, get the 50 credits and maybe earn years of pension service sporadically. We have quite the mix of those within the department. The benefit is then payable for the volunteer's lifetime. The plan does enable volunteers who meet certain criteria to retire early and receive a smaller benefit. That benefit is smaller at early retirement because it's a smaller benefit, but it will be paid for a longer period of time, and the reduction in the benefit is designed to provide about the same value over their lifetime as if they took the full benefit at age 65, and that's true of every defined benefit plan. The benefit, the plan does also provide a modest benefit to a surviving spouse should one of the volunteers who is married pass away before retirement. So that's a, that's, those are the real basics of the plan, it's a defined benefit plan like the plans that the town has for police officers and members of the town government as of 1999. After 1999, new town employees are not covered by the defined, the town's defined benefit plan. As with any defined benefit plan, there are assets that have been set aside in a trust through contributions that the town has made over the years. What we do as the town's actuary is to take a look once a year at the liability for those pension benefits that we expect to be paid, and compare that liability level to the amount of assets in the trust, and then advise the town as to how much the town should contribute into the trust each year in order to make sure that the benefits, that there's money to back those benefits when the volunteers retire and start receiving benefits. So a big part of what we do for the town every year is to determine that contribution amount, it's then up to the town to pay that amount, but we calculate it. We also calculate some information about the plan that's required to be put in the town's annual audit statement. Any questions about the sort of the basic operation of the plan?
Yes, could you review what a spouse, what a spouse, how a spouse gets?
I have only, I brought along with me my little cheat sheet, which does not go into any detail, and this is what it says. If a married participant dies after being credited with 10 years of credited service and is survived by a spouse, the benefit is a 100% joint and survivor annuity, that is, the spouse gets 100% of the benefit that the member would have received, but it's reduced to reflect that there is a benefit being paid to the surviving spouse. If an unmarried participant dies after being credited with 10 years of credited service, his or her designated beneficiary shall receive a benefit as though the participant had retired early and had elected a lifetime pension with 120 payments guaranteed. So there are benefits that are payable to both married and unmarried volunteers if they die before retirement, but after 10 years of service. So 10 years of service is, is the point at which someone becomes vested in the benefit provided by the pension.
So does that spouse get it for life then at that point?
Then it's for the spouse's remaining life, yes. Other questions about the benefits? Okay, well, Anthony handed out two pieces of paper for you. The first that I'd like to look at is headed Peer Group Study, and one of the comments that Mike passed on to me was, how common are these plans? Do surrounding communities have them? And so I just took a look at the map and started looking at nearby towns, and then a couple towns that are maybe not quite as nearby, but happen to be clients of mine, so I have information about them. And in fact, almost all of your neighbors, except for communities that are big enough that they have paid fire departments, but all of the sort of similarly suburban towns in this neck of the woods have very, very similar pension plans. There is a technical term that covers this class of pension plans, they're collectively, they're called length of service award plans, and they are for, the volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel represent a very unique slice of pension plan participant because they are not, of course, employees of the town, and almost always a pension plan is for employees, employees of the town, employees of a corporation, employees of a hospital or university. Volunteers are not employees, but there is a long history of this kind of pension plan being provided, not to every community that has a volunteer firefighting force or ambulance, but to many communities is very common to have a length of service award program such as this. So I collected some statistics of the plans that are provided by sort of your near neighbors, looking at how many people are covered by those plans, that just gives you sort of an idea of the scale of size of the community and of the plans. North Branford is a somewhat larger population covered by your plan than some other communities. And then I, where I could find information about the level of benefit, I've added that in, it wasn't available for every one of these plans, and there were a couple of towns, Killingworth and Wallingford, that had somewhat complicated schedules where the benefit multiplier level, the benefit level depended on length of service. And then different plans might have a cap of some sort on the amount of years of service that can be counted towards pension benefit. North Branford, you have a 35-year cap, there are other plans that have a somewhat smaller cap, or I couldn't figure out what the cap was. So there's a variety, as you can see, quite a variety of benefit levels. And all of this information I took from publicly available sources, the annual audit reports that are publicly available. I then compared the cost of the benefits in this graph at the bottom. The cost in, in the sense of how much, what is the burden on the respective towns for funding the pension benefits? And I took a particular measure of cost, this is measuring the cost of the benefits themselves. It's not a reflection of how well or poorly funded each of these plans is, it's just looking at the cost of benefits that are being earned each year by the active members of each of these plans. So of course, I'm the actuary for a few of these plans, but not all of them, so I took information from the audit reports that is a measure of cost. I recalibrated, you'll see the word recalibrated, I recalibrated all of these numbers to adjust for the fact that different actuaries, different pension plans have different interest rate assumptions that are used to measure liability, different interest rates for the same benefits will give you different measures of liability. I recalibrated so that these are all apples-to-apples basis, and then I just divided by the number of active members so I could get an idea of the cost per active member as a measure of the richness of the benefits. And you can see, I picked out North Branford in blue, your benefits are somewhat on the more expensive side, but by no means the most expensive one of this little peer group. There is, as you can see, quite a range of cost. For those towns that are my clients, which includes Old Saybrook, Norwich, Madison, and Chester, I have full confidence in these numbers for everything else, I'm relying on some other actuary that I don't know who has put together numbers that show up in the annual audit report. But this is to give you a sense of what other communities have in terms of benefits and cost. Any questions on this information?
What's the difference between inactive and retired?
So there, there are individuals who may have been active members at some point, actively working enough hours, putting in enough time to get credit, and there may be people who, once upon a time, or maybe even last year, but not this year, they are not putting in enough hours, but they're not old enough to retire either. So they're not actively earning benefits and they're not retired, they're somewhere in the middle. We use the term inactive to cover them generally.
Does inactive also include only people with 10 years service, or could they be, have fewer years service?
That would sort of depend on the actuary doing accounting. For me and my clients on this list, it would include both those that are vested and those that are not vested. Someone who is inactive, has maybe seven years in, may very well next year or the year after put in more time, get up to the vested mark. So we, we, when we do our work for the town, we want to take into account that that person might eventually become vested in their benefits. Another actuary working for one of the other communities might choose not to count them. So that's a little bit of a squishy number, it's the best available information, but I can't tell by looking exactly what might be in that inactive count.
Okay, that's a large number on this count.
I can tell you what the breakdown is for your plan, if you're interested.
Yes, thank you.
As of July 1, 2018, we had, no, we've grouped, well, we had 21 who were in that inactive place, and then there were 27 retirees and seven beneficiaries receiving monthly benefits. So 34 total receiving monthly benefits, 21 inactive, and 115 active. Any other questions on this page? All right.
Yeah, before we get off it, I want to just make sure that I understand this, with the multipliers, and so if I take North Branford and somebody works, your maximum years are 35, and the, the payment for 2018 is $28.20 per year, so...
So I brought my calculator, Justin.
So they come out somewhere around, so in North Branford, you're going to get about $1,000 a month.
It's just under that, it's $987 a month.
So the same person in Branford, where they have a 10-year cap, they can work to 35 years, but they only get paid 10, and they get $350 a month. Is that correct?
That's my, that's what I gleaned about Branford, from the published information.
So you're not sure on Branford?
They're not my client, but that's what I read.
And then, so it'd be just like in Madison, they get, they get $1,250 and they're capped at 20 years?
Mm-hmm, right. And if you can see, in the chart...
North Haven is 10. So North Haven has a cap of 200 a month.
Right. So if you can see, Branford's at the very bottom in terms of cost, which makes sense if the most anyone gets is $350 a month. So there is quite a wide range of benefits, and that's why there's quite a wide range of costs down in this graph at the bottom.
How do you, how do you work out that Old Saybrook's cost would be higher than North I'm just curious, I don't, with the graph, I'm looking at the numbers and the maximum service and so forth, and I was just curious.
Right. Old Saybrook is a slightly smaller benefit, total benefit, but that plan may provide other benefits such as disability benefits or something that increase the cost, and there may be different, different underlying actuarial assumptions. I've adjusted for the difference, I've recalibrated for differences in discount rates, but there may be other factors at play, there might be a more conservative mortality assumption that assumes people live longer. There are a lot of factors that go into the calculation of costs, and I've adjusted for one of them only.
I have another question on this. So when we first, the documents we got when the first went in, it was, it was a cap of, or a cap that you could get, if I read it right, $1,500 per year, and you could collect from the age of 65 to 70, or am I misreading that?
Wasn't that part of the special case?
The very first one that we did.
Yeah, that's going back in the mists of time.
Just to cover a certain group of people.
65 to 70 is the active retiree, I think you're referring to?
Oh, okay.
70 is the mandatory retirement age, so the council...
So you weren't, it wasn't cut off at 70?
At 65, you couldn't earn any more pension credits.
Right.
But there were folks that wanted to stay past 65.
Got it.
So, to get the best of both worlds.
I wasn't understanding what the 65 and 70 were. Thank you.
The second page then, Anthony and Mike asked me to, to look at a couple of hypothetical proposed increases in that benefit multiplier, the current, the $28.20. So first, the top set of numbers is just a five-year projection of the town's contribution, so the actuarially determined contribution, that's the amount I advise the town to contribute each year. And you can see it's not exactly the same amount each year, but that's, the first set is just the baseline, what if there are no increases in the benefit multiplier? And then the middle section is evaluating what the cost impact would be if the benefit multiplier would go up by 55 cents in each of the next five years. So you can see in the benefit multiplier column is $28.20, and it would go up to 28.75, 29.30, and so forth, each year it goes up by another 55 cents. And we, you can see then that the actuarially determined contribution would go up a little bit more each year to reflect that incremental cost of the higher benefits. Now, when a benefit multiplier is changed like this, typically it is, it does not impact the benefits for, for the folks that are already retired, or for the folks that are vested but no longer put in any more service. This impacts those that have not yet retired that are continuing to, to earn those, those years of service. But you can see on the 55 cent section that each additional year, the, the town's contribution would go up by another $7,000. So $7,000 the first year, $14,000 the second year, and so forth. So roughly speaking, there's a little rounding in there, but roughly speaking, each 55 cent increase costs the town about $7,000. And then the bottom section is a similar sort of thing, but instead of 55 cents, it's a full dollar increase in each of the next five years. So each dollar increase costs about $13,000. It makes sense, if 55 cents cost about $7,000, a whole dollar costs about $13,000. So that's the cost impact, estimated cost impact of increasing the benefit multiplier in the next five years. Any questions about that analysis?
Why is there a difference, Becky, between what you show as the estimated additional annual town cost and the total increment from one year to the next? In other words, from 2019 to 2020, and the 55 multiplier increase?
Yeah, there's some, there's some rounding going on under the scene, under the hood, and, and we've rounded a little more generously in some places than the others, but I see exactly what you mean, counselor. So that we have a little imprecision in, in our rounding, my apologies, I normally round first and then take the difference, but...
Right, but the number in the second to the last column, that is the total cost?
Yeah.
And the additional estimated cost is included in that number?
So, it's, so, okay, let's, let's look at this, let's look at the 2020 numbers, the valuation year 2020, so the middle set of numbers. With the 55 cent multiplier increase, the actuarially determined that year, contribution that year's 289,000, are you with me?
Yes.
So I'm just going to look at the middle line. Compared to the same 2020 number with no multiplier increase, that, that contribution was 275. So the increase in the contribution from 275 to 289 is $14,000. And then down in the $1 section, that, again, the 2020 line, the, the contribution would be 301,000 compared to the baseline 275, that's an increase of 26,000.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's not, these aren't the increases from one year to the next, these are the increases relative to the five baseline numbers.
And the 2021 year goes, it goes down, 289 to 286?
The baseline numbers are not going up indefinitely, so the baseline numbers, if you just look at the baseline numbers, if there are no changes in the benefit multiplier, the contribution is going to go, is projected to go up a little bit next year and then actually decline a little in the years after that.
What is the service cost?
The service cost is the cost of benefits being earned each year by the volunteers who put in their 50 credits, who get 50 credits. So it's the value today of those additional benefits that are going to be paid over the individual's retired lifetime.
So I got a question on why it's going down, because...
The baseline costs?
Yeah, is that because we're going to be in a section where, like, a group of older guys retired and there's nobody ready to retire?
No, it's...
You have the same number of members and you're, I don't understand how it could go down.
So our projections, and, and let me, let me give the standard disclaimer right now, we don't know what will happen in the future. We do our best to, to sort of give a peek, you a peek around the corner based on assuming that the future unfolds in accordance with all of the assumptions we use when we calculate the contribution. So we have assumptions about patterns of turnover, when people will retire, how long they'll live and receive benefits, and we have an assumption about how the investments will perform. For purposes of this analysis, we assume that the investments will always earn, our assumption, which currently is a 7%, so we'll, these projections assume...
Have you looked at our pension?
We have an ongoing discussion, members of the pension board, about that assumption, but we're not, we don't set that assumption by looking at the recent past, we look into the future, but one of the things, this...
So we're going to make 7% this year, or this year, right now that we're in?
Our assumption is that long-term, the investments will earn 7% for purposes of...
What did we make the last two years?
Not 7%.
How about, did we make 1%?
I said before, when we set our assumption, it's a forward-looking assumption...
So I'm just asking, or you don't know what we made last year?
I, I don't have the exact numbers, I could look them up for you. I know the pension plans did not do very well in the last couple of years. I'm not your investment consultant, I don't handle the money in any way, shape, or form. Pension board makes decisions about the asset allocation and the investment management...
But I'm just wondering if we have a history of making .2, .20% or...
Right. You've had...
Less than half a percent, why would we be doing the math at 7%?
Well, you have had some years where, where the investments did phenomenally, and some years where the investments have done so not phenomenally, but when we set the investment, the interest rate assumption, it's a forward-looking analysis of your asset allocation, that you have an investment policy statement that sets out target asset allocations, and we look asset class by asset class as expected.
I agree, with that long sum of money, we ought to be making 7%.
Right, right, well, the, what's important though about the history, about what actually happened in the past, is that the investment volatility is far and away the most volatile part of the pension plan. The liabilities, as they change from year to year, are pretty predictable, things like the, the service costs are pretty predictable, but the investments are not. And we don't want the town's contribution to jump all around from year to year just because the markets have jumped around. So one of the important tools that we use when we're calculating that actuarially determined contribution is that we gra... contribution is that we gradually recognize any market gains or losses over a five-year period. So, we're dampening market volatility so that the contribution will not be too volatile. We know what the last five years' worth of market gains and losses have been, and we know that over the next five years, we will gradually recognize them. And that shows up in these projected numbers. That part of the reason why they're not, you know, behaving in some, a really nice, steady, upward or downward fashion is that there are investment gains and losses, and a bunch of losses from the past two years that are flowing through and that are impacting the contribution. But losses from the past two years, but gains from years before that. And as they gradually, each of those gains and losses separately flows through over the remainder of each of their five-year periods, they'll impact the contribution a little bit. So, the projection of the contribution reflects that kind of movement, as well as expected retirements, expected members passing away, and, and, you know, a whole panoply of things behind the scenes. We do this exercise every year for the town. I've just pulled in five years here, but we actually do a twenty or twenty-five-year projection for each of the pension plans, so that for long-range planning purposes, you have an idea of what might be coming down the road.
So, did you do this one for twenty years?
Yes.
Great. Do you have that or not?
I did not look at the increase in the benefit multiplier across the full twenty years, but our, this is a copy of our valuation report, and it has a long-range projection on page fifteen. Page thirteen. And it shows that the town's contribution will continue to go up-
Is this twenty years or twenty-five years?
Uh, we did to twenty-thirty-two.
Okay.
That, you know, with the science behind that was the number of years that would comfortably fit on a page.
Hey, you're honest.
Yes. So, we are projecting the, the contribution, the town will continue to make contributions for, till more or less twenty-thirty, and at which time, the plan is actually expected to become fully funded. And the, maybe, in fact, a little overfunded and a little bit of surplus will hopefully be available to cover the service cost. Now, please, twenty-thirty rolls around, don't call me up and say, hey, Becky, you told me that, right? These are projections based on a whole lot of unknowables.
So, explain that to me again. So, there's no cost to the town in twenty-thirty or anything?
If the plan becomes overfunded, there'll be surplus that will cover the cost of the benefit accruals that the active volunteers are earning. And so, there could be no cost to the town. That is more so the case with the town plan, where there are no new employees being covered by the plan, and by twenty-thirty, I don't know, Anthony's gonna keep, still be working here. I know, earning benefits, but they'll be, so there'll be a little bit of service cost for Anthony, but all of the other active members covered by the town plan will probably have been retired.
So, that's if we didn't touch the multiplier.
Right. So, getting back to the plan, the ta- the firefighters' plan, the projection on our valuation report doesn't reflect any increases in benefit multiplier. But if we were to take tonight's projection and extend it beyond five years, we would still see a pattern, we would, of, of the plan becoming fully funded in the fullness of time. You have larger benefits, but the town's contribution would be correspondingly larger each year. And if the town contributed those larger amounts to cover the larger benefit multiplier, the plan would still get to being fully funded at about the same time. So, you get bigger benefits, you're gonna contribute more, but the way in which we calculate the town's contribution is designed to get the plan to be fully funded by about twenty-thirty, even if you increase the benefits.
So, what, you mean fully funded?
So, you're just gonna pay more between now and twenty-thirty to get there.
Like, fully funded, you're, does that mean you pay the same amount every year out of the town, or the town doesn't have to put anything in it?
Fully funded means assets equal liabilities. We actually, when we project this, we ex, we project the plan actually overshooting the mark a little bit and becoming a little bit overfunded and having surplus enough to cover benefit accruals from that point on. As a practical matter, because markets are volatile, it's unlikely that any pension plan ever, you know, stops on the dime at a hundred percent funded and never moves off that mark. As a practical matter, because there is investment volatility, any pension plan is likely to bounce around anywhere between, say, ninety percent funded and a hundred and ten percent funded. And we will, as you, we'll be happy to work with you when the plan gets there, to manage that volatility. We don't want the town's contribution to be, to be bouncing around a lot from year to year. So, we'll manage the, the volatility that the investments will inevitably cause, so that, so that you have budget stability. That's very important for municipalities.
So, let's go back to the seven percent that we're gonna earn on our investments. And I, I have a, a memory of reading criticism of pension plans in a variety of places with unrealistic assumptions. And I don't understand how you, you get to a seven percent return when, particularly when municipalities have to take an extremely conservative view on their investments. So, if you're taking a very conservative view on investments and still having a projection of seven percent, then I guess we can expect some really remarkable gains in our individual four-ones.
Well, the, I, I recognize at least one member of the pension board here. The folks on the pension board-
No, no, I'm not asking of the pension board.
No, no, no.
This is not a question for them. This is a question of the assumption that you've made.
They, they, I, the, the lead-in was that the members of the pension board are probably sick and tired of hearing me come every year and talk about the interest rate assumption. And we've been gradually bringing it down over the years. And as we talked about last time I was here, there is still more bringing down that we need to do. The interest rate assumption is still a little high relative to the plan's investment, target investment allocation. The plan has been, the, the retirement board, in, in connection with their investment consultants, have been crafting a new target asset allocation, is my understanding. And, but, it's something we analyze every year to advise the board in terms of what we think is a realistic, long-term, expected investment return. And we want to have our assumption be realistic. We don't, I, I agree that there are many public pension plans that do use interest rate assumptions that are on the high side. One of the things I do for Milliman is, I'm the author, we do a, a study of the hundred largest U.S. public pension plans. This year's edition is going to be published tomorrow or the day after, so look for it. One of the things that we do as part of that study is look at the interest rate assumptions and then do our own independent analysis of the expected returns on the, each plan's asset allocation, and look at the gap. And the, the, those hundred largest public plans have been steadily lowering their interest rate assumptions over the six years that we've been doing this study, but they still have a long ways to go. Their median is seven and a half percent. That's high. In the Connecticut municipal world, I would venture that Connecticut municipal pension plans probably have a median assumption that's closer to seven percent. All public pension plans have been, or should be, looking at their interest rate assumption. And all of my clients certainly have been lowering it and lowering and then lowering it over the past fifteen years. It's, it's a hard subject, because a lower interest rate means a higher measure of liability. It means a higher contribution from the town. If you don't expect that there will be as much investment income to help pay for the benefits, well, you've, you have the benefits, if they're not gonna be paid for with investment income, they've got to be paid for with town contributions. So, every time we lower the interest rate assumption, it increases the town's contribution. And the, the town has made great strides. There's more still to be done to get the interest rate assumption down to a nice, conservative, realistic, long-term view of investment returns. So, sorry, that was, that was a long soapbox answer. That, that is a soapbox.
No, I understand that. You're, you're allowing us to make unrealistic assumptions and not fund the pensions.
At the end of the day, it is the retirement board's purview to, to select the assumptions. Now, I won't, I won't sign off on something that I think is wild.
In fairness, what Becky's not saying is, it's our decision, not hers. So, while she makes a recommendation, which she has consistently recommended lowering the interest rate, it's our decision whether or not it's lowered. If it is lowered to where it probably should be, the number you will be asked to contribute as part of our annual budget to the pension plan will choke a horse. So, the fault is not with Becky, it's with the reality of the market and what the town itself is deciding to do. And we're really getting off topic, because what our focus tonight is the fireman's portion of the pension plan and the multiplier, which is at a specific level and being requested to be increased to another level. That really should be our focus in terms of taking Becky's time tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be happy to discuss the other stuff with you.
No, no, I understand that. I'm just, you know, fol- following the comments.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the regular town council minute, meeting. First is reports of committee boards and commissions, economic development commission.
Uh, there was no meeting since the last council meeting.
Park and Recreation?
Their meeting is next Tuesday.
Police Commission?
The Police Commission met on January fifteenth. There were quite a number of items on the agenda. They reviewed their bylaws, which they now are able to follow. There was an update on the police facility. The new Ford Expedition that was approved by the town council has been ordered. They've discussed, they discussed a number of future changes and possible purchases that they think will enhance procedures in the work environment for the police officers. I think the most important thing to mention to the council, that the Police Commission has chosen February second for the interview for seven candidates for the chief of police. The interview committee includes all of the police commissioners and three town council members, Mayor Duty, George, and yours truly. We will be on the interview committee, but the commission will make the decision.
Thank you. Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee?
I got it.
Or Fire, sorry, Fire Commissioner?
Uh, there was no, no recent meeting. The next meeting is beginning of February.
Thank you. Next is Board of Education and Town Council Communications Subcommittee?
Um, we met tonight prior to our council meeting. The Board of Ed has budget books available. Their first work session on, on their budget is this Thursday night. So, if any council members go to the meeting, and they will give you a budget book, otherwise after, if you don't go, then on Friday, they will send them down to Town Hall for Mike to distribute to us. Marie and I got a copy last week when we were at the budget subcommittee for the board, so we already have ours. So, they have not gone over, the administration has not go, gone over the board with, with the proposed budget yet, and the first workshop is this Thursday night. We also spent some time on the RFP queue for the North Bramford High School, renovate as new. They are actually, they decided to amend what they originally were gonna do. Instead of doing just a renovate as new, they now have three options that will be in the RFP. It's renovate as new, renovate as new with some additions, or build new. So, they're looking at all aspects of it, and one of the reasons they're doing that is because with the reduced enrollment at the high school and a lower level, it would be, they would be remiss if they did not go out to look to see once what a new high school would cost, because it would most likely be a smaller footprint than what is there now. And they, they are looking at options if that, as part of that, the, to build new, what they're thinking of is the new part, to build totally new would be in the student parking lot and some of the land, the fields to the side there, and poss, in the, the wing where the cafeteria and the art rooms. That would become the high school that they could build new if possible, and then once it's occupied, tear down the rest. So, those are all options that they're going to look at. As far as funding it, they have twenty-five thousand dollars in their capital budget that was appropriated by the town council. This study would cost more than that. They're kind of basing it on what Bramford Walsh Intermediate, they went out and they did several options on their RFP, and that costs somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars. So, the extra funding of the project, they have two funding sources that they would come back to ask the council for additional money. One is the money for NBIS, which they started out at approximately two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, and we've spent around a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So, there is some money in that fund. And then the other is the one percent fund from the budget last year, the money that they have in there, which is a pro, it started out at three-hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure how much is in there, but that's another place to get the money. The other thing we talked about was this RFP for the security cameras for Totucket Valley and for Stanley T. Williams. That has been revised. The issue with that was the warranty going, in the original bid was for five, five years, which could not be met. So, it was rewritten down to two years, and Mike is gonna check to see once if that is out on the street yet. If it's not, it should be pretty close to going out. We also talked about the NBIS waterproofing. There's forty-eight thousand dollars in the budget for the last two years for waterproofing of NBIS. They went out and got a quote as to, to, to do that project, but it was a more comprehensive report. Franny was part of it, along with Bill Chody. They brought in a local contractor to look at the building, which is approximately seventeen, eighteen years old. And there's issues with cracks in the mortar, the building having to be repointed, gutter replacements, just cleaning out. So, it's a lot more extensive work to prolong the life of that building. And that estimate came in at a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. So, they are putting in the additional money in this year's capital request to get the project done correctly. And then we also talked about the possibility of combining resources between the Board of Ed and Town Council as far as personnel goes. So, we are gonna take a little bit closer look at that, get some more information, and our next meeting is on February nineteenth at six P.M.
Is that, the budget meeting's at six on Thursday?
Correct. Their, their first budget meeting is this Thursday, the twenty-fourth, and the second one is scheduled for February seventh, both at six o'clock.
Thank you. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee?
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yeah, they basically, when George was there, again, he helps me. Basically, we talked about the plan, they had a little presentation on the plan of development. How much else went on?
Well, the marijuana didn't, did not go forward for either the dispensaries or the growing, growing facilities, because the state may take action, and that will supersede what we do. So, they're go, they're, uh, gonna wait and see.
Thank you. East Shore Health? Next, moving to Town Managers Report, average source transmission, municipal notification.
Yeah, that, that's in your packet, just an FYI, that they'll begin work in February. Actually, the latest update was a, a notification that they will be out surveying Edge and right-of-way. That work will be, is underway, and that they've sent out a copy, a letter, a notice to property owners that there'll be activity and that the real work begins in February. It's just a, it's an FYI for the community at large.
So this is the one over on 22?
Yeah, their main transmission line, what they, they call it, I don't know, 1655 line, and I'm not sure of the direction, but maybe Kurt or Fran might have a better idea on that. And it's obviously just portions of the town and not townwide, but I don't know the specifics.
Does it affect like any residential businesses, they'll be notified?
Right, yeah, there's a letter here, there's sort of a sample that they're out there notifying already that they'll be beginning their work. Sort of what you can expect.
Thank you. Annual Business Breakfast?
Yeah, I'm happy to report that it was a great success this morning. The annual business and state of the town meeting took place here this morning. We had approximately 45 attendees for that meeting, which was great. And I'd like to publicly thank Dick Bauer from Honeywell, who's the Vice President of Sales for the division there. He filled in for us. Our featured speaker was Wendell Davis of SBA, and unfortunately with the government shutdown, he's not permitted to attend the meeting, could not come to speak. And so what we're going to try and do is reschedule him as a speaker for April, and actually Honeywell, I think, has agreed to host that meeting in April. I say April, sometime March, April timeframe, if it has to be May, but sometime in the spring, we'll get SBA speaker back here and have another opportunity to hear about the program. But so Dick filled in for us as the guest speaker and gave a really nice presentation on the Honeywell brand and what they do in Norfolk and their location. And it's really impressive to know that they are, what they assemble there, what they make there, the precision manufacturing going on there. There are 700 employees, just taken on another 40 employees, I think, from a plant that was closed in Niantic, I believe. And they're going strong, they're here to stay, and very profitable for this line here in Norfolk. So it was very, very good news and a very good insight as to what they do, the lines of product, the history he went through. Very informative, very good. We also talked a little bit about the town's assessment deferral program and the potential for grand list growth this season in 2019, which includes the medical space being built off of 139. And of course, that section of town is going to see development on both sides of the street with the Rose Winery and Vineyard and Winery on one side, and the Office Medical Space on the other, close to 48,000 square feet. So that should be hitting the grand list for this year of 2019, and there's more, obviously more developments, the council aware of in development that should bear fruit after that.
Thank you. Update on the Potato and Corn Festival?
No.
Oh, that's planning on conservation and development.
Yeah, and just a memo from Carrie about the upcoming workshop on the 29th. And I, if I can, I don't know if there are any questions about that, but Malone and McBroom is going to facilitate that workshop, and that'll be at NBIS. I did put at your desk a copy of an email I received from OPM today about a House Bill 5765 that was passed by the House and Senate and signed by the governor today regarding a municipal, I mean, regarding a loan program for federal employees affected by the shutdown. But they went beyond just providing the loan. They're giving municipalities the opportunity to opt for a tax deferral for any of those affected employees. So from a timing standpoint, I thought I'd put this before you tonight in case there were any opportunities, if you wanted to amend the agenda to discuss this. Again, it looks, I have both the copy of the email and the full bill is at your desk. I have read, I have skimmed it. I'm not sure the whole, you know, the impact, because I don't think there's a way for us to know what federal employees are living here in town. But they would, I guess, we would have, if the council wanted to enact this and go forward with this, you have the option to do so. But I don't know how, other than through advertising, we would find out, they would have to self-identify, I believe. We could.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask to put that on the agenda for action for the next meeting. I think, we don't know for sure, but I think it's something we should discuss and perhaps act on. I really feel sorry for those folks, and if we do have some in town, I think we ought to consider it.
I have no problem. We'll schedule it for the next agenda.
February 7th, okay.
Okay, moving on, we'll go.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I just require, would you like to have a draft ordinance for your, part of your deliberation? Because, I mean, in order to factuate this, you'd have to refer something for public hearing. It would have to be approved by way of, it's the adoption of an ordinance that functionally puts a deferment on the collection of taxes from anyone who identifies themselves and establishes themselves to be a federal employee who has been basically out of work and not receiving their income, and that deferment stays in effect for a window not to exceed 60 days after when they begin working again and start receiving their income. The purpose of it is to try to help these people out during this shutdown process. So that's basically what the section of the Public Act is that would apply to you for purposes of your agenda. But if you want to refer something out and actually proceed, I would put a draft of an ordinance together for you to talk about. If the consensus is that that's not something you want to do, I wouldn't do that, but.
We're not going to be able to adopt this to affect the current tax install that's due January 1. It'll be late January 31 if it's not paid. So we're probably looking at July 1, which, if the government is still shut down, I think our problems are going to be much greater than just a firm property debt.
I can't see it for going that long.
Probably what we need are the issues we ought to focus on. What jumps out at me is, most people pay their taxes through mortgage payments. How does that interplay with this bill?
It doesn't, in fact, what's going to happen is, if the mortgage company has advanced the taxes, and then there's a default under the terms of the mortgage that's between the taxpayer and the mortgage company because the towns have paid. So unfortunately, in that situation, you know, unless the mortgage lenders have similar regulations because they participated in TARP and, you know, they're being told not to pursue federal workers because of the current circumstances, you know, there's not going to be anything that you're going to be able to do to intervene in that way. I can review the Public Act to see if it is retroactive to include the January tax bill?
I think it is.
I thought it was also.
I think it's a December 22nd date, I think, is in there somewhere.
So, right, and so you might, it might, you might be able to extend the benefit for this January tax bill, and therefore, really what you're doing is, you're not assessing interest against these folks for the period of time that they're delinquent in payment taxes. That's functionally what the bill is saying.
All right, next item is Community Events and Presentations.
I'll take the moment under Community Events and Presentations to point out that the library, in this case, the Smith Library in Norfolk, is hosting a tax preparation services opportunity for town residents. And it will begin on February the 4th, extending through into April. On Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, at the Smith Library from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., people in town who have limited income, disabilities, limited use of English can get some help with the preparation of their tax returns. It will require that they bring in a copy of last year's tax return, picture ID, their social security card. And if they have any questions, contact either library to get some further information. But that's a nice service that's available through our library system for tax preparation for this year.
Thank you. Next item is Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence.
Good evening, Cliff Potter, Norfolk. I've been sitting back there taking some notes. First thing I'd like you not to do is put a dollar amount on the heads of all our firemen, because they don't work a 40-hour week. These guys are on 24/7. Now, if you're in a paid department, you're on a shift. You know your days off ahead of time. As you can see, the very guys that wanted to talk had to leave because the fire alarm came in. That's dedication. Can you put a price on that? I don't think so. Again, this gentleman, that gentleman, all these gentlemen here that are in the fire department, you only see one of them. But don't forget, they've got families. So you have the family involved constantly. How many times do they have plans for the day that are broken because, and I know Anthony, I don't think he sleeps, because he's constantly on the go. And all the other firemen, too. Steve, everybody. Now, another thing, when they're on a call during the day, guess what? Their personal income is affected because Billy, who left, he's a carpenter. He has to put the tools down to help us in town. Now, that comes out of his operating budget. He's actually on time, on town time, not getting reimbursed. Another thing, how's he get to the firehouse? His personal vehicle. Guess what? Gasoline isn't free, insurance isn't free. So you've got a lot of hidden things here that you should take into consideration. Their service is 100%. I don't think there's too many families, and Al had a pretty serious situation last winter, and they responded very professionally. So, again, stop the dollar signs and look what you're dealing with. Today's economic world, both parents are usually working. Now, the farming you have in that situation, this is like having a third job, and they're still taking more and more time away from their family. Again, they've got to be recognized for this. Like I say, the paid departments, you saw that. I mean, she used Branford and some of the other ones, but they have the paid departments, so maybe that's why their figures are different. You've got to look at it a different way. Like I say, these guys are 24/7, 3/65. It affects their families, it affects their income when they have to go on a call. So I really wish you would look at it, think about it hard. You can't beat what you're getting for your dollar in this town, and I don't think you should shortchange them, because it's harder and harder and harder to get volunteers. And the training they have to go through to be certified, that comes out of their personal time. They don't get paid for that. So you put all of these factors on a sheet of paper, and then you try to put the dollar signs next to it. Be very careful what you do, because our numbers might go down. And that's the last thing this town needs, is less volunteers. They're shorthanded now. It's only going to get worse if you mess with them too much. Thank you.
I'd like to say something also. As I mentioned before, I've used these guys a few times. They've been to my house quite a few times. And I was with the paid department in Hampden. These guys are just as good as the paid department, if not better. They're giving up their own time, they're using their own cars, like Cliff said, they're using their own cell phones for fire department use. They're up 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning out in the cold, and I think we got a great deal here. I think we got, I know we got a great bunch of guys, because I know most of them. And I feel it's a great deal. I wouldn't touch anything money-wise that would affect these guys. And I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving on, resignations and appointments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Item 7B, and it's to, the reason is to fix an appointment that was made at the December 18th meeting for Scott Small.
Okay. First item is reappointment?
I just need a second. It was to amend the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leal?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
First item is reappointment of Gene Stabile to the Board of Fire Commissioners, term to expire 12/1/2021.
It's then moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leal?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is a correction on the reappointment of Scott Small to the Economic Development Commission as a regular member, term to expire 12/31/2021.
Okay, so at the December 18th meeting, the motion read, it was Item 7G, and it wasn't caught when we approved those minutes. But the motion read the reappointment of Scott Small as a regular member to the EDC, and actually, he was an alternate. So it's not a reappointment, it would be an appointment of Scott Small to the EDC as a regular member. So that's what it has to read, because we just made an appointment to fill the alternate spot. So I would like to make a motion to change the minutes of the 12/18, 18 minutes, meeting minutes, Item 7G, to read the appointment of Scott Small to the EDC as a regular member, term to expire 12/31/21.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fornin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leal?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
Okay, moving to unfinished business, discussion in action, review of proposal from Silver Petroselli Associates regarding Plan for Town Center.
Yes, Bill had provided the proposal, which is in your packet. Actually, it should have a revised proposal. It came in after the packet was put together, after it was Dropbox. So it should say additional comments on page two, and it should have the compensation, the architectural site planning concepts for $8,500, and then the add alternate fees optional for the create the background plan, aerial mapping, Class D research at $4,800, and the A2 boundary tie-ins and detailed topography for each building at $3,700. So those are the corrections in the revised version of his proposal. And Bill said that with respect to the add alternates, he felt that the GIS information data that was available online had some pretty good information there that he thought would be sufficient enough that, he's not quite sure that the council would want to go so far as to have an A2 survey at this point in time, when given the fact that you're really just kind of looking for a conceptual layout, I guess, if you will, of where the best place to put buildings and fields and other amenities as to be detailed, I guess, as to be listed. And I think Kurt could speak to that as well, that they confirm that the GIS information is pretty good stuff.
Yeah, actually, the information with the GIS is taken from the state LiDAR data. It's basically one for contours, and it was flown in 2016. So it's very accurate, it's very relevant, and from a planning point of view, you've got good information that had no. got good information that had no cost. So I don't think, in the way it's written, they're not recommending that if you want to do it, but they have enough information, it appears, from that, those elevations, those contours, to do their planning documents.
So then they're saying that they can do it for $8,500?
Right.
Really not recommending that we need to do the add alternates?
Right.
What do you guys think? Is it worth $8,500?
It is for, it is for a map and something going in the future.
Yeah, I think the only, well, I agree, I think that's a decent number, and I think it just is the process of working out the amenities and how many buildings, you know, what you want to see from the council, and that can be tonight, it could be the next meeting. But I think that the police department or police commission is going to be a little, is going to be on hold, and would like to see this project continue to move, but they can't really do that until we get this piece done. And I think Bill said that he could, you know, expedite it, right? Fast-track it, if you will. So it's just, maybe we spend some time here outlining the, or capturing what this council wants to see with respect to amenities and how many buildings.
I know there's a push being made from the state. I assume it's going to continue on in this new administration for regionalization of services. And I'm wondering to what extent, if any, we should factor in any possibility of regionalization of any services when we're looking at this project.
Well, I know one of their things that this administration up there is looking at is, you know, the Lamont administration has made it known that they don't feel a school district of less than 2,000 students is a viable school district. They put it out there that they aren't going to act on that in the first 100 days, but they would like to do it in their first four years. So I think you're absolutely right that before we spend $40 million on a high school, we're going to want to know if the state's going to force us in the next five, six, eight years to merge with another school district. So I totally agree that we've got to be, we've got to know what's going on in Hartford and, you know. I guess we've got to look to our state rep and whoever else is working for us up there to try and keep a handle on it. But they started slow like that up in Vermont, it took them about five years, and they made it mandatory. You don't get a dime unless you, the small towns had to merge. So Lamont has said that already, that that's on its radar. So that's one thing we've got to be real careful of.
And we did talk about that at the Board of Ed meeting tonight, the communications subcommittee, when we were talking about the RFP for the high school, is that we will keep the project moving along, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that there is talk about that for the high school and keep abreast of what is going on there before.
Well, there was, there was talk about it for other services as well, and I certainly wouldn't want to be going down a path as if in 30, 40 years, the town will look and serve exactly the same way as it does today. That wouldn't be responsible, so.
Does that include police and fire also, along with the schools?
Not, not what they said. I don't know. They're not talking.
I don't know either.
It could, it could.
Yeah, it could.
Yeah, we don't know.
That's what I see happening eventually.
But I think for this, we need to look at, you know, if we want to do this, we need to tell them that we're looking to have, you know, four municipal buildings and a little green up there.
With the gazebo. What difference does it make? You know? How to have the gazebo?
Do you want to put that in a formal motion?
I mean, do they need, does he need to know which building?
Well, I think just to say that what we're talking about is a police department, ambulance building, town hall, and I thought a community center, those four, is that the four you're talking about? Or was there?
Yeah, I mean, I just figured, you know, I wouldn't need to put any number on it. I'd just say, okay, if you're going to have a town center, it'd be about four buildings. Go from there. If they're going to lay it out.
Yeah.
You know? Unless you guys want to just put one library there.
Do we need to make a formal motion tonight?
We do, so that we can move it along.
We're good on that. I mean, I think that that'll be enough for them to keep going on in those.
Yeah, that's fine.
Very all good idea, you know? So I'll make a motion that we, that we okay the $8,500 and say we'd like to see a little town center designed with four municipal buildings and a small green.
I'll second that motion.
I'll make the source.
For the $8,500?
Out of, uh...
We're going to take it out of, we're going to put you on for a low.
Out of contingency, out of contingency.
All right, so amend the motion, make a contingency appropriation.
Okay. I'll amend it to make a contingency appropriations.
I'll second that.
That'll get in for the project. Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fornin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Viglio?
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is review of proposed road ordinance.
Good evening. I'm back just to review the memorandum included in your packet and sort of go over what's included in that. And then when I'm done, I'll turn it over to Attorney Marino. A question came up at last meeting that I think he can address regarding liability in terms of sidewalks. Just a quick review, the proposed ordinance 2018-3 with the man, chapter 201, entitled Streets and Sidewalks. Including your packet, there's really three main items. One is the proposed ordinance with the proposed additions and deletions. Additions are in bold and deletions are in brackets. That's a required format for a public hearing. I've also included a version of it showing the final readable form where I've deleted all the items that were being eliminated, and just, this is the proposed final form with the section numbers and all the wording that goes with that. Also included, that is a road standards document and a detail sheet. The proposed ordinance, the current Streets and Sidewalk ordinance includes all the details and then to require a public hearing and ordinance change to make any changes to the road details. What I've done is pull out the road standard details in a separate document that we require Town Council approval to amend, to change, but I just, I removed it from the ordinance. It's more readable and it's more of a standards-type document. I think we've reviewed it, it's been on the agenda for quite a few times already. The last question that came up was the question regarding liability on sidewalks. When we discussed briefly some changes recommended by Attorney Marino regarding sidewalks, specifically sections 201-25 and 201-26, maybe I'll let Attorney Marino address that liability issue at this point.
Sure. So I was not at your last meeting, but the question raised as it was related to me was whether or not the town would remain liable for injuries caused by defect in a sidewalk after it had adopted an ordinance requiring that the abutter maintain the sidewalk. In the situation where the town became aware of a defect, but the homeowner failed to take action to correct it, would the town then have liability if it failed to take action at that time? And the short answer, and I have a memo that I'm going to hand down. This way. The short answer is, no. In the state of Connecticut, once the town has adopted an ordinance that shifts the responsibility of maintenance from the municipality to the property owner, the municipality's liability with respect to damages resulting from defects is relieved. And the responsibility rests then on the homeowner. And if you're a short one down there, let me know, I'll pass on. So, and, so what I wanted to say is two things. So I believe it's clear that once the ordinance is in place, liability stops. Even if we're aware of something, property owner does not fix it and the town also does not fix it, liability rests with the town. In the event that someone were to notwithstanding sue the town, which of course they will, and then the town will claim as a defense that it's not liable pursuant to the ordinance that's adopted, there is a heightened obligation on the part of the claimant to recover damages against a municipality for damages resulting from a defect in a public way, like a street or a sidewalk or a bridge. And that's basically a notice requirement, that the town must be on notice of the defect, either actual notice or reasonable notice based upon what reasonable maintenance would require. So in the event that a court were to conclude that for some reason, the town is liable notwithstanding the ordinance, and I haven't found any case where that happened, but if that were to be the case, then the plaintiff in that situation would still have to establish the heightened notice requirement that plaintiffs in cases against municipalities have to establish, and that is either that the municipality is on notice of the defect or that they, you know, that it was reasonable for the municipality to have known about the defect based upon routine maintenance obligations. In this situation, there'd be no routine maintenance obligations with the sidewalk because it would have shifted to the property. And a defect, just so you know, a defect does not necessarily just mean like a broken piece of concrete. A defect could be anything that obstructs the public's right of way. So it could be a limb, a tree limb, it could be a child's bicycle that was left in the right of way. Those are considered to be defects under the law. And again, what the ordinance, this ordinance will do is shift that responsibility of maintenance from the town over to the homeowner. Anyone has any?
But if the town follows the procedure in 201-26?
Yes.
And Kurt gives notice to the property owner that he is aware of a defect, and if it's not repaired within, I guess it says 15 days, the town can come in and make the repair and then leave the property for the cost of that repair. Failing, having done that under those circumstances, does the town have liability? Clearly, they're on notice.
And that's interesting, you got to, I think there's no notice issue because town's aware clearly, except that there have been no cases that I have found where there's a situation where a town adopts an ordinance shifting the liability and then continues to remain liable. All the cases where the town has a similar ordinance, the liability does not stand against the municipality, it rests with the property owner.
Okay.
Good. Okay, just to recap where we are, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing for this proposed ordinance, get any public input before the Town Council could take any action to adopt it. So it's, if you're comfortable enough, we could schedule a public hearing. I'd recommend you do something, probably the second meeting in February. It's not a WPCA item, when it's not, WPCA is not on the agenda, it's usually a lighter agenda, give it time for the notices publications. So.
Yeah, just a motion from the council. I think the 219 date would work more effectively, 7:30. We typically set a public hearing date for 7:30.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for February 19th at 7:30 a.m. for the proposed road.
PM.
PM. For the proposed road ordinance.
Second. Discussion.
That would be held here right?
Hey, Ben, but on your conclusion, if there was, if there was, if someone did get injured and the, as I understand it, and the property owner did not repair, and then, but the town knew about it, and the town didn't repair it, then the municipality is responsible. Is that how, is that, am I reading that?
No, no, basically, what I tried to do is, my associate got this to me later in the afternoon, what I tried to do, when you adopt an ordinance that shifts the liability, and quite frankly, the memo could have been due on page one with the brief answer, which is what I articulated, is that once the ordinance is in place, that stops the liability of the town. The rest of the analysis comes aside. I wanted you to also be aware of the heightened, the heightened obligation when the town is sued under a situation, to the extent that you were to, in your minds, want to debate whether or not there should be, you should keep it the way it is, you should at least know then what the liability of the town is and what the obligation of the property owner is. Because in the situation where the ordinance is in place, that notice issue does not extend to the abutter, right? That's only for the municipal, only for municipalities. So it's more, it's always more challenging as a claimant under a personal injury lawsuit to recover against a municipality because of this notice obligation. And that's why routinely what happens is lawyers will issue these notices to municipalities as a condition precedent, but then it's still, notwithstanding against statutory notice, they have to establish as part of their cause of action that the town knew of the defect or reasonably should have known based upon maintenance schedules of the defect. But that's where the ordinance is not in place.
Okay.
All right? So since you're going to be going into a public hearing and deliberating whether or not to put this in place, I wanted you to, again, appreciate, there is this heightened obligation on the part of the plaintiff coming against the municipality that is absent against the abutter. So if your house abuts it and this ordinance is in place and you don't maintain it, and then I have to bring an action because I was injured against the homeowner, I'm not going to have that notice requirement against the homeowner because of the ordinance, which is perfectly fine, and the municipality's doing it across the state.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's the motion.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fornin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Viglio?
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano?
Yes.
Next is update on 944 Totover Road remediation.
Mr. Mayor, that is, I think the last update that we've given you was a February 1st deadline to submit an application. I mean, Kurt may be able to be more particular if he has any conversations, but we're waiting to see if that application is submitted in time.
Well, and currently, they're scheduling or doing the survey work at the sort of first part of it. I have nothing to do, though, thanks. He wants to talk.
Okay. That's fine. Next is personnel rules and regulations of the merit system.
Yeah, unfortunately, nothing ready at this, at this point.
Okay. Moving on to new business, discussion in action, bid results from RFP number four, reappraisal and reevaluation of 2020.
Yes, I apologize, I got ahead of myself on, I put the bid results in there, but in talking with David Ambrose, he needs more time in evaluate, reviewing and evaluating those responses. So he's indicated that he could have that ready for the, sorry, February 19th meeting. So we'll have that ready at that point.
Thank you.
How much should we have budgeted for this? $100,000?
$125,000.
We did have $125,000, okay.
Next is contingency appropriations.
$125.
We did have $125, okay.
Next is contingency appropriations.
This basically corrects the effect of the negotiations for the ASME groups and the teamsters and the administrators to bring the general ledger accounts to reflect the current raises that were provided by the council, so that by the January 31st numbers in the budget, they're accurate.
I'd like to make a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency account 101-4703-760-0000, and transfer into the appropriate accounts as soon as possible for the following purpose: salary pension benefits retro per contracts of $48,375.
Roll call.
Mayor Dooty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelaora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leon.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is financial report as of December 31st, 2018.
There's actually one item to note, if you look at the very top line, that I typically function, point out is the tax collection line. And it will appear that the current year is less than last year, and it is. But last year was an anomaly. If you recall, there was the big concern that people were going to lose the 2018 tax deduction on their payments. And a lot of people came in in December of 2017 to try to beat that. So, the last year number was skewed a little bit higher. Aside from that, the report is unremarkable. There's no departments that are over expended. Expenditures are running a little bit less than last year. And aside from that revenue difference on the tax line, things are pretty much status quo.
Can you, I noticed in the miscellaneous revenues, it's a big decrease from previous years. Is there any explanation for that?
Yeah, last year, there were three large items. There was a settlement on the dog bite case, world famous dog bite case that we had. There was a settlement on a tax foreclosure, that the money went into that account, and then we paid back the tax department through it. And with the third item, there was a worker's comp retroactive adjustment for three years that went into those miscellaneous refund the prior year expenditure accounts. It's kind of a catch-all for funky things that happen.
I like that, funky things.
Next item, citizen statements and petitions.
Okay, Cliff Potter, speaking as a veteran now, I know we're going to address this federal mess, for lack of a better word. I know of a family in town, so what is the procedure? Do you want to be notified? I don't want, I want, you know, don't want to identify them publicly, but if other people know, should they call you now rather than wait?
Feel free to call me.
Okay, and you can give them a thought process of what you're looking to do, right?
Right.
You're looking to give them some kind of tax abatement?
That the pill, and I can give you a copy of the bill, or we can...
I can't read that. I need Ben to explain it to my level. Tax deferral.
Not, not an abatement.
So, when does, when does it take place for them, then? Immediately?
Well, no, assuming, assuming that the town council were to adopt an ordinance...
Okay.
...to assist these individuals.
Yeah.
And the individuals would not be obligated to pay their taxes that became due as of January 1st.
Okay.
Until the federal government reopened and they started.
Right.
So, there'd be a window of about sixty days from the, sixty days after the date they went back to work, so that presumptively, they got their retroactive pay, and then their, you know, their future pay.
Right.
And then can rebalance their finances and then pay their taxes.
Okay.
So, during that window, if this ordinance were in place, no interest would accrue on those unpaid taxes.
Okay.
They don't, it's not an abatement.
Okay.
It's just the...
Delay.
Hartford is giving the locale, the locales in Connecticut the ability to waive interest on unpaid real estate taxes, which generally, the municipalities don't have the right to do.
Well, let me tell you, this is a real ego buster for this family. They didn't do anything wrong. They're living in the Northeast when they came up from Georgia. They're living in Connecticut, and it sucks, in plain English for these people. It, it's really, really mentally tough on them as well as financially, because they did nothing wrong and they're being punished.
I would recommend, in the interim, if there are any families out there that are impacted, that can't afford to pay by February 1st, they should contact the tax collector and let the tax collector know.
Okay.
So, that maybe, because the tax collector will have the ability to potentially defer taking any action.
Okay.
While we kind of, things get sorted out, so...
Would you be the point? I don't think we have a slew of people, but I do know of one family.
Yeah, I'll be happy to help and assist in any way with information, sure.
You know, because I visited this family, and it's tough. I mean, this guy is a proud military man, and he's got nothing but a big slap in the face, he's got young kids, eating bills, and yeah, he's not happy. I don't blame him. I would be furious if I was him. And so, doing his job still.
Yeah.
And so, I, you know, but I think it should be put out there, maybe on the town website or however.
Sure, yeah, we can...
Trying to get ready to help people, so they know what to expect, because they're up against it, and there's no end in sight. Too many egos can't be checked yet.
Yeah, and there's more to the bill. It's actually three components of an actual loan program.
Yeah.
The municipal tax deferral, right? And then this...
Anything.
Opportunity to participate in the unemployment compensation. So, it does, the bill does three things.
Okay.
And we can put a copy up.
Yeah, we...
Or link.
It's the hardest time of year, right after Christmas, and we just went through a cold snap, and, you know, it's tough on these people. So, if we can help them any way possible, I think they would appreciate it. Thank you.
Ben, how long would it take you to come up with an ordinance?
By next meeting?
By nine.
By, I will, I will have a rough draft this week, so, and what I'll do is give it to Mike, so he'll be part of that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to address a problem that I've been dealing with for quite some time. And what it's all about is an adjoining property owner...
Mr. Osslander, just, just give us your name and your street address.
My name is Martin Osslander, and the adjoining property owner is Janet Petrie. Okay? Now, what happened was, they put a house on the property next door, and there was not proper oversight insofar as what was going on, insofar as draining, the drains, for the roof drains and also for the footings. Now, the law states that you're supposed to dispose of the water on the property of origin. This didn't happen. I have all kinds of problems right now. I'm getting a tremendous amount of water down on my property. What happened when we had the heavy rain, it washed out the end of the berm. So, I'm getting everything down on me, okay? Now, like I said, there wasn't proper oversight. The inspector should have been there, take a look at the ditch, see what was being done, and know that what was being done was within the law, and it was not within the law. Now, I had a similar situation when my house was built, where there was not proper oversight. The house was up, the house was framed, it was sheathed on the outside, the roof was on, and there were shingles on the house. So, what I did is I called somebody who was a contractor, and then I didn't know much about buildings and construction. Brought him over. He's on the back of the house, he says, "What's going on here? The back of the house is bulging out." Now, I've also worked with framers for about a year. Stick framing is built in such a way, so what you do is you tie the outside walls into the inner walls. This keeps the house square, so when you put the rafters up, the weight doesn't cause the walls to bulge out. And I'm here tonight to get this problem rectified, okay? Now, I've been told there's nothing we can do about it. Well, that's the law. It should have been implemented a long time ago. Now, Janet Petrie knows that a holding punt is the answer to the question. She has told me that herself. She is well able financially to take care of problems. Her husband took good care of her. She's had all kinds of rentals, so money's not the problem. It's just that nobody in the town here is willing to go out and get this problem taken care of. Now, I'm going to give, what I'm going to do is paraphrase Michael Bloomberg. Justice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere. City hall should be open to everyone. And also, time is always right to do the right thing, and that's the way I feel about it.
Michael, can you have somebody look into that?
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I met with Mr. Osslander this morning, and I didn't, and I told, as I told you, I would meet with Tom Cowell. We, we met several months ago, back in, in October. I explained the fact that we have no jurisdiction or authority to, to force Ms. Petrie to do any corrective measures. In fact, we have a letter from the state building official that I've made a copy for you from 2003, who was actually on site to inspect the drainage and declared that there was nothing, how did he put it? He didn't find any evidence or provisions of state building code that have been violated, and hopes that the mitigation plan at the, at the time would, as outlined above, be effective in resolving the situation. And Mr. Osslander, Ms. Petrie, the neighbor, put in a berm at the time, which they thought would, would solve things. We took the extra step and went the extra mile and had, I instructed Tom to try to facilitate and, and speak with Ms. Petrie, which he did, about a retention punt, and unfortunately, the response is that she's, she's not, she's just not interested in spending money to do that.
It did not take care of the problem, okay? Now, when you do something, you expect to take care of the problem. And that only tells me that the people involved didn't know how to take care of the problem, okay? That's what it tells me. Now, we hire people in this town, and we hire because they're supposed to be professionals, and they're supposed to solve problems. Because if you hire people that don't know what they're doing, you have got total chaos. And this is not the kind of town people want to live in, okay? That's how I feel about it, and that's the way it is. And you know that. Now, I want to see something done about it, because that's the law, okay?
Yeah. I cannot do anything, Mr. Osslander, at this point unless the council instructs me to do other...
What year was this house built?
I don't know the house, but the letters I have are from 2003. Mr. Osslander could probably tell you better than I. I don't know.
Now, this chapter, Mr. Marino, last night made a comment when I was here. We can't do anything. Well, let me ask you something. If you had someone come over to your house and destroy it, would you expect the police department to do something for you? Or would you just sit back and walk away and say, "Oh, everything's okay"? Okay? This is why we have all these people here. We're not here to be seen on television or anything else, because if that's why you're here, they don't belong here. You're here to make this town better, and you're here for that reason, and that reason alone, okay?
Mr. Osslander, as I previously explained, there's a distinction between what a municipality is obligated to do as a matter of the law, and what would qualify as a private property matter between two individual citizens. In the second situation, which we have determined this to be, there is not an obligation, nor is there standing for the municipality to intervene unless there is a regulatory basis to do so. And we're unaware of any regulatory basis to intervene, and we believe this to be a private property matter, and that was the basis for my statement. So, if my house were destroyed in your hypothetical, I would be left with no, no other option but to engage counsel as a private citizen and bring a lawsuit in the court, as is my right, as is your right, sir. And that is what, that is the position that the town has taken, unless there's a, unless the town council wants to take a different posture. But I didn't, I did not see any basis in fact or in law to intervene in this matter. And if there, if there had been even an edge to do so, I always err on the try, on the side of trying to do so, but I did not see so here.
Well, I'm here tonight in front of the city council, because I can assume, there's a lot of people here that are trying to do good, okay? Now, I used to work up in Ridgefield. I was working for electrical company, okay? This inspector up here, within the bar more than within the other place, he waved to everybody on the site to drive by. There were superintendents in charge of the job. So, I was working with, says, "We've got this problem." You know what the guy says? He says, "I don't care what you do. There've been two or three superintendents before me, and they fired me. So, I'll be gone in a couple of weeks. I don't care what happens." Now, it's the responsibility of this town council to make sure that this town is run right. This is what they're here for. You know, that, I can only assume that. They're not getting paid much, they're spending their time here. It's like the fire department. They're doing what they feel is right for the town, okay? There is good people in this town, and I want to see something happen that shows me that there is good people in this town.
I don't believe the issue is whether or not there are good people in the town, or whether or not those good people want to take action. Good people are not entitled to take action unless the law so authorizes, and I do not see the basis for that intervention in this proceeding. That is the issue. It's not that there's not a willingness, it's the ability based upon the facts and circumstances where we find ourselves. That's the situation.
I'll tell you, I just went not long ago for pneumonia. I was in the hospital about a year ago. I was in the hospital for a week. They released me. I went into the facility. I went to the bathroom, it's feces on the floor. There was a black woman there, and said, "There's a problem over here, it's got to be cleaned up." "Hmm, I don't care." So, then what I did is I said, "I want to be released out of here." So, either I walked out the front door, or you release me. So, they brought a physical therapist and occupational therapist. They walked me around the facility, abdomen climbs there, and they go, "That's okay, Mr. Osslander, you can leave." Okay? Called the next day, I asked for the manager. I got him on the phone. I said to him, "When you come into your job today, you know, every day, what do you do?" "I get my department heads, okay? They tell me what's going on." Said, "Did you ever walk around the facility and see what's really going on?" "Oh, no, I didn't." Then he tried to put me in a defense, and he said to me, "What did you do when you were working?" I used to work for the railroad. I had charge of signals and crossings and switches and all that stuff. I had to make sure that people were safe, okay? I found a situation one time where the crossing would jump, and they walked away and forgot they jumped it out. Train comes down, crossing stays up, people get killed. I took that responsibility of turning in and out of the water, because I wanted to make sure it never happened again. I also was one of the first people, the first person to ever wear a vest. There were people getting killed out there, they're working on the property. They trained their result until the last minute. I went out there one day, the air tract was coming about 100 miles an hour, he's about a half mile away, and he blows the horn. He recognized me. These are the kind of things that I think is important, and I think it's important in this town that the people that are in the council here make sure that things are done right and people are treated right. That's what I do. You know, from wrong, tell me.
Mr., Ms. Osslander, I've stated my position three times. And under your hypothetical, your neighbor would fit into the category of that manager, and you're saying that your neighbor is not doing what you believe is the right thing for your neighbor to be doing.
That's the law.
That's, but that is a...
That should be enforced by the people that came to inspect the job.
Private property rights are enforced by private individuals, and that is where you find yourself, in my view. If you, as I have always said, if you want to have a lawyer contact me and persuade me otherwise, but I have not had...
You want a lawyer to tell you that it's the law, have someone call you.
No, sir. If you want to have someone put something together where I can review it, but there's nothing that I've seen as a matter of fact or law that would support...
Okay, then I'm going to get you in print exactly what the law is, and I expect you or the council to follow, okay?
We will.
That's all I'm asking.
I will, I will give an update to the council at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, I'd like to, I'm going to take a shot at this. So, I'm a builder.
Okay.
And I'm going to, so, so you're not going to like, you're not going to like to hear what I'm going to tell you, but I'm going to tell you the way it is. but I'm going to tell you the way it is.
Tell me what you've got on your mind.
Okay? So, obviously, the house was built before 2003. And, you know, we learn as a society going forward, you know, what, what we can do and what we can't do. Back before, and I'm not sure of the year, but...
And I'm sure that a lot of people in the, in the business do a lot of things they shouldn't do too because they need a way with it.
Absolutely. Builders get sued all the time. But, so, so with, with regards to your rain gutters and your stormwater drains, up until, and Kurt might know when this went into effect, but up until, I'm going to say maybe 2012, they, what you did with a footing drain and a rain gutter drain was you headed for daylight, which means you just headed so that the water was downhill from your footings and, and, and it ran out on top of ground. So unfortunately for you, that, that was allowed back then. Today, it wouldn't be allowed. And if you're on an uphill lap, you have to have a rewatering system. And so it's kind of like there's a double septic system. So you have to be able to, all your water goes into either a rain garden, which would be like a bowl, like you're talking like this, about the solution. So today, probably there would be either a rain garden or there would be an under, you know, a subsurface retention system that would hold their water and let it percolate through the ground. And so obviously, you're downhill from there. So, so then it would go, it would go at the natural rate.
All the perp's foot drive is lower than their property.
So what I'm telling you is that it's a civil matter. I agree with him. It's between you and them, but I'll, I agree with you. You cannot, not one of us here can divert water onto someone else's property.
Okay.
So, but it's a civil matter. It's, it's nothing we can do now. If the house was built after these, these things, the laws changed and the code changed, and how we're handling water, you know, rainwater and, and your footing drains, you know, today, if someone did that, you'd say, "Okay, did the inspector miss this rain garden? Did Kurt not inspect this? Because it's right on the site plans now, and they have to be there." But they weren't there when this house was built.
I'll tell you what happened. The state came over and looked at this, where all the water collected, all these six-inch pipes come into this one point. And there was six-inch pipe. What he didn't know, because it was all covered over, there was a 14-inch pipe that was in the ground after the cove. This 14-inch pipe was double-walled. It had holes in it. So it's not only taking the water off the house and the footing drains, it's lowering the water table on the property. Now, initially, what they were supposed to do is put rye in and then put hay to block the water, okay? Like you see on most construction sites today when they're doing the, the startup work, you see the bales, you know? Like down here where they're going to put the place that they're going to make, they make beer on 22. And but I also bring another question to mind with the river down there. How the heck are they going to get rid of the waste? I mean, I see they're progressing with the, I would assume they got an okay to keep going because they spend a lot of money down there. But that's another question I have. You know, good to get the river down there. You know, so, I know they have a lot of land that's part of that property, but, you know, it's kind of a question because I know there's a lot of waste when you make liquor, you know?
Yeah, they have, I mean, that's a totally different thing.
Oh, no, it's a different subject.
They have, they have to haul off their, they have to haul off the water, and there's a, there's a, there's a company in the state that's taking water from these, from these breweries if you don't have a city sewer.
Okay. If you can give me your telephone, I'm going to have my lawyer call you. You know, I've been paying taxes in town for a long time. My money is as good as anybody else's.
Absolutely.
You can spend it anywhere, just like anybody else. And I expect to get some from my money, okay? I don't feel like I want to have to leave town. Been here 50 years. My kids got educated here, and I'm very pleased with the town up to that point. My kids are doing very well. All my grandchildren are really in top colleges throughout the country, okay? So I have a lot to be proud of. But I'm very troubled with this problem I'm dealing with right now. So I'll have them call you.
Thank you.
Thank you.